I call this meeting to order.
I'll read the calls, ma'am.
Estela, we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me read the call first.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Thursday, June 23rd, 2011 at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. First item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We'll have the invocation by Father Oscar.
Dear brothers and sisters, the peace of the Lord be with you. As ordinarily elected mayor and the City of Commissioners being their service in our beloved city of Brownsville, Texas, let us make the prayer of Pope Benedict XVI for politicians our own. Let us pray. Lord, Father of the universe, you have created humans to work with you, enlightening those who lead and govern us. You know how hard it is to always be fair, considerate, and compassionate. Our politicians and leaders need your help and guidance, Lord. Grant them your love and benevolence and make them attentive to your perfect will. Your infinite mercy, Father, give them the desire to serve and teach them to stand for the right causes and through a conduct that is always faithful to you. Blessed are political leaders. Protect them, defend them against the evil one, now and forever. Pater Noster qui es in celis, sanctificetur nomen tuum. Adveniat regentum, fiat voluntas tuas sicute in celo et in terra. Pane nostrum quotidianum da nobis odie et diviti novis debita nostra. Sicute nos debitimus debitoribus nostris et nos inducas intentacionem sed libera nos amalo. Sito nomen Dominii Benedictum. Es hoc nunc in usque seculon. Adjuntorium nostrum in Dominii Domini cui feci celum et terram. Benedicta vosa omnipotens Deus, Papa, Filio, et Spiritus Sanctus. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Father Oscar happens to be the pastor of my parish at St. Joseph's, so welcome. I'd like to give a really warm welcome to everyone here. I think we had a meeting on Tuesday and I had asked, invited everybody to please show up, show your interest in the city and the city government. And I know there's a lot of proud families out there. And so we welcome each and every one of you and welcome all the Commissioners for being here this evening. Estela?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, the item number one.
Item number one, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2011-043, canvassing and declaring the results of a special municipal runoff election held on June the 18th, 2011 for the purpose of electing an at-large Commissioner A and a District Commissioner Four. Mayor, if you would allow me, I will read the ordinance, I mean the resolution.
Please do so. Yes, ma'am.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, approving the returns canvassed and declaring the result of the special municipal runoff election held on the 18th day of June for the purpose of electing an at-large Commissioner A and a District Commissioner Four. Whereas on the 23rd day of June 2011, during a special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, the City Commission canvassed the returns for the special municipal runoff election held in and throughout the City of Brownsville, Texas, on Saturday, June the 18th, 2011, and found the results to be as noted on Attachment A of this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, that the above referenced election results serve as the final, true, and correct election results of the June 18th, 2011 special municipal runoff election, that the City Commission officially finds and determines that said election was duly ordered, proper notice of said election was duly given, proper election officers were duly appointed prior to said election, and said election was duly held. The City has complied with the Federal Voting Rights Act and the Texas Election Code. Due returns of the result of said election have been made and delivered. And the City Commission has duly canvassed said returns, all in accordance with law and the resolution calling the election. And that the City Commission officially finds, determines, and declares the result of said election to be that Estela Chavez-Vasquez is hereby declared to be elected as Commissioner at-large A and John Villarreal is hereby declared to be elected as Commissioner District Four. That this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption issued this 23rd day of June 2011.
You entertain a motion for adoption?
With the approval.
Okay, I think we'll take both of you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Congratulations. Just to show you a little bit, before we go to item number two, which will be the swearing-in, I want to introduce you to Judge McDonald, who will be doing the swearing-in for Commissioner Estela, and Judge Garcia, who will be doing... The sad part about the whole thing is I know both of their fathers well, okay? Anyway, we'll go with item number two?
Item number two is to issue certificates of election and administration of the oaths of office for Commissioner District Four and Commissioner at-large A, and then assumption of duties of elected officials. We'll start with Mr. John Villarreal, please. John, if you'll stand over here a little sec. Sure. Ma'am. This will be the one that you're going to read. Okay, John, repeat after me. I'll raise your right hand, please. I, John Villarreal.
I, John Villarreal.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I do not directly or indirectly.
That I do not directly or indirectly.
Have paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Have paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment for the giving.
Or employment for the giving.
Or withholding of a vote.
Or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected.
At the election of which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, if you'll just go ahead and sign. Now Judge Garcia will issue the oath.
I, John Villarreal.
I, John Villarreal.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
As Commissioner District Four.
As Commissioner District Four.
Of the City of Brownsville.
Of the City of Brownsville.
Cameron County.
Cameron County.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will do the best.
And will do the best.
Of my ability to preserve.
Of my ability to preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, this is your certificate of election. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a few minutes, really just a few minutes, to say a couple of things about John. First of all, I want to thank him for allowing me to be a part of this process. I'm truly honored to have been a part of his campaign. And also, when he asked to swear me in, I was truly, truly honored. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Camarillo for his service at District Four. That is a position that John is assuming and I think John knows he's got some big shoes to fill. So Commissioner, I want to thank you for your service and everything that you've done. Just a little bit about John. I've known John for many, many, many years. Eight, nine years now, it's been a long time. And I've gotten to know him professionally, personally, and now politically. I've learned some of his political convictions and where he stands on issues. Over those years, I've really gotten to know him as a person. And when I thought about what I was going to say about him today, I thought, "Well, I'm going to come up with three good words to define John." And that was hard to do because I've known him for so long. And I could really say a lot. I'll only say what I should, I won't embarrass you. But at the end of the day, I did come up with three words that I think define him. John is very hardworking. That was the first word that came to mind. He's also very honest. And the last word that I think defines John is that he's very respectful. And I think those three words are traits that any leader should have. Anybody who's in any sort of position. You have to be honest with people and not make false promises or false misrepresentations to people. You have to be respectful. People will come to you with questions and problems and you have to listen to them. You may not agree with them, but you have to listen to them. Finally, John is very hardworking. He owns, you know, his own family business and they operate it as a family. These four individuals run La Mima Tortilla and Grocery. And it's a very, very demanding job and they do a great job at it. John, hardworking, you have to be hardworking and committed to be able to deliver the things that you can to the people that have questions and problems for you. That said, I think John is going to be a wonderful, wonderful Commissioner. I think we have high expectations of John as a Commissioner, but I also feel very confident that he's probably going to surpass all of our expectations. Thank you.
Can we say a few words? Can I say a few words or anything?
Yeah, go ahead. Then you can say something when you're...
Want to sit down?
When you eventually go up there.
Okay, I'll come back. Thanks, sir. All ready? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, brother. I mean, no need to say it, yeah? Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Check your seat. Thank you.
Get him to sign those.
Mayor, Commissioner, Mayor.
Come here. Okay, that's Chavez-Vasquez. I forgot to say Chavez-Vasquez. Okay. Okay, Commissioner, if you'll repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Estela Chavez-Vasquez. I, Estela Chavez-Vasquez. Do solemnly affirm... I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Yes, it is. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I have not directly or indirectly paid. That I have not directly or indirectly paid. Offered, promised to pay. Offered or promised to pay. Contributed or promised to contribute any money. Contributed or promised to contribute any money. Or thing of value. Or thing of value. Or promised any public office or employment. Or promised any public office or employment. For the giving or withholding of a vote. For the giving or withholding of a vote. At the election at which I was elected. At the election of which I was elected. So help me God. So help me God. If you'll just go ahead and sign here. And then sign here. Go ahead and sign this one as well. And I'll sign this one.
My name is Arturo McDonald. I'm very, very honored to be here with Estela, Tony, and their whole family. They worked very hard. We're very, very proud of them. They're friends. If you don't give me a mic, I'll talk all night long. So it's her night and it's her family's night. And the only advice I gave her, it's time to work. And there's going to be a lot of it. And I wish her luck and I wish the family luck and I think she's going to do a great job. Raise your right hand. Just repeat it. I.
I.
Estela Chavez-Vasquez.
Estela Chavez-Vasquez.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties as.
The duties as.
Commissioner at-large A.
Commissioner at-large A.
Of the City of Brownsville.
Of the City of Brownsville.
Cameron County.
Cameron County.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. There's a lot of them.
Use your certificate at the bike office.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the advice. It's one of the ones. She sent everything? I just was wondering whether you'd like to... Thank you. You have that one.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Congratulations.
Estela, public comment would be next.
Public comment is Mr. Robert Uresti.
Welcome to the Commissioners who have been here before. Guys, if you see what you've done through this election, you've done a marvelous thing by having all of these folks that are sitting here. And expect great things from these folks because you deserve it. And so as we go forward, now that we have four women on the commission? The one newspaper asked me, says, "How do you think you can work with four women?" And I said, "Well, I had four sisters, so a lot of training." Anyway, I'm looking forward to it. I know that everybody here is looking forward to working together as a team to serve the City of Brownsville in every way that we can. So congratulations again. Again, thank you all for coming today. And unless we have any other comments? John, do you want to say a word to, or Estela? Or ladies first, I guess, huh?
Okay. I just want to thank a few people before we end this tonight. Let me start by saying it's an honor to be sitting here as a newly elected Commissioner for our district. I look forward to serving the district and the entire city with honesty and integrity, always keeping the progress of our city as my main priority. Now, I've always had a great deal of respect for our elected officials and public servants for their selflessness and dedication. Now, after being a candidate myself, I have a whole new level of respect for them after seeing all the hard work and time we have to put into the campaign. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank God for giving me the strength and guidance to get through this and to reach this milestone in my life. Now, many times I felt overwhelmed and he was always there to get me through it. I cannot find the words to express my gratitude toward my family. They're here, sitting in the front row. The campaign put an added load on all of us and made it difficult to run our business. But we got through it, we did it. Now, whether it was waking up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning so we can finish work early and I can make meetings, or we'd come home and finish up at night, we got through that and I know all the sacrifices you made were for good and I took notice of them, so thank you. Next, I want to thank a family that I've gotten to know over the past few years and now considers part of my own. And they are the Hernandeses. Now, the evening I decided that I was going to run for office, I went over to Ernie and Norma's house and they're one of the first people I told. I think they were more excited than my own parents. But I had their full support from day one. And God bless Erin for accepting to be my treasurer. She has two wonderful kids, a business, and a law office to run. And I don't know how she pulled it off, but she did. I couldn't have done it without her. And Ernie and Michael, they dedicated their afternoons and their weekends to me, to my campaign. And I thank you guys. Now, the campaign proved to be stressful, but I admit it was a great experience overall. I got to meet a lot of people and I attribute... And I attribute the great experience part to the other candidates that were next to me. Ms. Letizia Garcia, Estella, Martine, Robert, Jessica, Charlie, Roman, Rick, and my opponents, Pique and Dr. Tony Zavala. They were all very supportive, and at one point or another extended a helping hand. And I thank you all for that. I can't forget the outpour of support from all of the mayoral candidates also. Thank you all. Commissioners Samora, Gawen, Troyani, and also Commissioners De Leon. They maintained an open door, and always were willing to support me, and I'm grateful for that. Now, my volunteers cannot go without mention either. All my friends and family were very devoted, and I can't express how thankful I am to all of them. Brownsville Chisme, most of you guys are here. Thanks for coming. Now, you proved to be instrumental in issues and in some campaigns. And I appreciate the confidence you had in me and in my campaign, and in my position on the issues. I thank you guys for all your blockwalking, your phone banking, holding up signs. It was hot out there, and I thank you guys with all of my heart. Another group that was very helpful to me was Buck. Now, I received the endorsement, I remember it was during trial days, so that was pretty early on. And it was a strong statement to be given so early. And I appreciate that, because it showed a lot of confidence, the confidence they had in me from the very beginning. And thank you guys for the countless hours you put into my campaign, and for all your hard work you do for the city. Also, thanks to our city staff. I knew some of them, but I'm getting to meet more of them, and you guys gave me the warmest welcome I could have ever wished for. My hats go off to you guys for your dedication and commitment to our great city, and a job well done. Last, but certainly not least, I want to give a huge thanks to my great friend Edward Camarillo. This is a bittersweet moment for many of us, because we lose a great leader who has a big heart, and nothing but the best intentions for Brownsville. I met Edward about seventeen years ago at St. Joseph's Church, where he taught me how to serve at the altar. His leadership and grace from a very young age were a true gift from God. Edward taught all the servers life lessons, not by telling us how, but by leading us through his example. He coordinated countless food and toy drives for the poor, worked on many improvements at the church, and devoted any free time he had after school and band practice. And all his time went to the parish. Not once did Edward or his family expect any sort of recognition or reward, and many of their kind acts will probably go unnoticed by most of us, just because that's the type of people they are. And I don't know if Edward's here, but like I told him last night, this isn't a failure for him. He stepped up to the challenge and gave it his best shot, and everyone admires him for being brave. And I know God has something great in store for him. Thank you, Edward. Today, we turn the page in a book that is over a hundred and sixty years old, and it's known as Brownsville. I trust the following chapters will be great, because we have a great team of authors up here to help write them. I look forward to representing my district, and I will continue to listen to my constituents as I did during the campaign. Thank you all very much.
Commissioner, Estella?
Okay, mine's not gonna be as long. I have too many brothers and sisters to thank, but I couldn't have done this without the support of the community, the different groups that we reached out, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. This is just the beginning of something great.
You know, when you have, what, twelve brothers and sisters? They don't let you talk much, I guess. But when I first met Estella, I said, you know, twelve brothers and sisters, I said, you know, I could use those guys, you know? But the truth is, I said, you know, and I was over at Lola's and said, you know, we can fix a cake for everybody's birthday. And she goes, "In my family, there's a birthday every month." So, welcome both of you guys. Thank you for your kind words to the folks here today. Unless anyone has anything else?
I just want to thank the voters of Brownsville. Something very extremely, extremely historical just happened. We now have a majority-women ruled commission, which is, I don't believe has ever happened in the valley before. Watch out, guys. But aside from that, the people that put us here are the voters. The voters are you guys. The city of Brownsville is one of the most extraordinary places in the world, and we have always said that. But now we have proof. Every single little girl sitting in here, watching TV, every teacher, please relay this message. You live in a city that will support you, and love you, and dedicate their time to you, and they will believe in you, and they will make you somebody. They have never seen these walls that other people have put up for us. The city of Brownsville is a great place, and we are so blessed to live here. Each one of us women went up against a man opponent, am I correct? We did, and we were victorious, because the people believed in us, and they didn't see these walls. And I personally want to thank you for being so supportive, and I want to thank God for putting me in a beautiful city like this, and I just hope we all appreciate it and teach our daughters. We are equal, and we are strong.
Well, Jessica, I didn't have a woman opponent, so thank God. Anyway, could I hear from my male friends again? No. A motion to adjourn, perhaps? Okay, Rick, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Lot of noise, and a lot of happy people, and one of the happy people is standing right beside me, Mr. Estela Chavez-Vasquez, a newly sworn-in city commissioner for place-at-large, right?
At-large A.
At-large A. And she apparently is one of the happiest people in the room. There are a bunch of them here. Let me ask you, do you have any plans? Do you have any programs? Do you have any approach that you want to take as you begin your four-year term as commissioner?
Well, right now, it's just getting to know what the different needs of the community are, obviously, because we know what we want to work towards. But we need to focus on what's in the best interest for the community, what is gonna serve the community the best. And so, I know I want to focus on youth initiatives and educational initiatives.
So you'll say those are your projects?
Yes.
When you say youth, are you talking about athletics? Are you talking about education?
Educational, educational.
And I think the mayor made a pretty, or rather, Mr. Tater made a pretty, well, stable new majority on the city commission. Well, it's true, but I don't see the difference between four women and four men. I mean, men can work together, and women can work together.
Definitely, definitely. And that's important to make sure that we understand that regardless of what the sex is, that we're here to do what's best for the community. Obviously, it's great to have more women on the city commission and in elected positions, but the most important thing that we need to focus on is that we are seated here for the benefit of the community, to do what is the best for the community.
Let's go back a little bit to the campaign. I know you worked hard. Anytime you're in the campaign, do you think, you know, why am I doing this, or what's going on here?
You know, it wasn't easy. The campaigning was new to my family and myself. Nobody in my family had ever done a campaign before. Most of our volunteers and people that assisted us in the campaign had never done a campaign. And so, it was a very good learning experience for all of us, and it helped us to understand each other a little bit better, and to know what our assets were, to contribute to the campaign, because we all brought in a different strength to the campaign. And there was no one point that I said, "No, I wish I wasn't doing this," because we knew that it was gonna be hard work, and we, as a family, made the decision to embark on this journey. And so, I never felt that I was alone on this mission. My family has been very supportive. And like you saw today, all my family was here, my brothers and sisters, my extended family, they were all present, and that has made all the difference in embarking on this journey, because it's not easy running a campaign. But with strong family support, and a lot of help and volunteers, we were able to come out strong and victorious.
I've noticed, too, you have a lot of friends here, and those friends obviously played a large part in your victory here in this election.
Well, we have a lot of friends and colleagues also in my business as an attorney. I've met a lot of great mentors along the way that have believed in me, not just as an attorney, and believed in me when I decided to run for city commissioner. And so, their support has played an important role in my being able to come out victorious. There's so many groups that I would like to thank, but there's not enough time to thank every single one of them. But from the bottom of my heart, I thank them for dedicating either financial support, emotional support, or just being out there. It was a difficult campaign, but we did our best to keep promoting our campaign, and what our goals were, to promote our city, and to make Brownsville a better city for all of us.
Well, again, congratulations to you, and I guess, summing it up, Brownsville's a pretty good place.
It is, a wonderful place, and I am happy to be a part of it.
Mr., thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll see you at Rotary.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Young, still here. There's a lot of activity, there's even, there's a lot of congratulations, a lot of pictures being taken, a lot of discussions. I have the pleasure of being with newly sworn-in and-stalled Commissioner John L. Villal. Commissioner, once again, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And as we were talking earlier, you say maybe that two years, you're gonna have to really work hard to get the voters to know you. Do you think two years, I mean, two years is enough time?
Two years, I think I'll be able to work on some projects with the rest of the commission in District Four to get my name out there. I mean, my goal isn't, right now, to get reelected. I want to come in and get some projects done, make a difference, but I know I'm gonna have to work hard if I do want to get reelected, because time goes by quick.
Well, you know, you're here, and I think most people would agree with me, you're here because you beat a man who's been around a long time, who's been on the city commission, mayoral candidate, well-known in the city. How do you think you're able to knock him off?
Well, I knew I was up against a huge obstacle with his name recognition, of course. He's got a big network of family and friends, and what I did is, I basically, I didn't rely too much on mailouts or newspaper. I did grassroots, I went out and knocked on doors, pretty much. So I got to know the voters, I got to know their issues, and they appreciated that, and they appreciated seeing a candidate at their door.
So you've got, I mean, you're just beginning, but I know you've had time to think about it. What would you like to accomplish? What are some of your priorities, Commissioner?
Well, District Four is, District One and Four are probably the poorest in the city. We have a lot of issues, we need some roads to get fixed. But if you're talking about a big project, probably a long-term project, I would say the downtown revitalization. That's something that I feel most of the commission, I don't know everyone's position, but I've heard several commissioners are for revitalizing downtown. So that's something I want to be very involved with.
There has been considerable energy and maybe some money spent on the environmental aspect of your district. Does that probably concern you?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
A cleanup of your district. You know, they're always having this cleanup, and that cleanup, and that graffiti removal. Do you intend to follow up with that? Do you intend to continue?
Oh, definitely. I, as a matter of fact, when we had Commissioner Edward Camarillo, we worked hand-in-hand. I would always help him on his projects, and that's something I plan to continue and keep the volunteers involved, and hopefully get those kids that would paint on the walls to come in and help us clean up.
Well, I've been involved, not in the cleanup, but I've done some reporting on some of those efforts. This seems to be a pretty easy success, and so, with the kind of luck, you'll be able to continue that. One thing that's gonna face you right away, I don't know if you've thought about it, is next year's city budget. Do you have any thoughts on the budget? Do you have any thoughts on the economy, and on city budgets?
Well, I know any time the budget comes up, it's a delicate subject. I know everyone wants their fair share, but we are in a recession, and we need to keep a close eye on the money we spend, and we need to set priorities. Now, I need to look at the latest budget and study it well, so I can make a very well-informed decision.
Commissioner, congratulations, sir.
Thank you so much.
See, I mean, a lot of people want to talk to you, a lot of people want your attention, but you were talking about the budget.
Yes, yes. I mean, I plan to get in there and study it, and use my business background and my education in business as well, to make the best possible decisions.
That's right. You are a businessman, so you know some of the ins and outs, and paperwork, and government red tape that you have to go through. Do you think, excuse me, what we're doing, live TV? Do you think that your knowledge of the bureaucracy will help you and your attitude toward business?
Sure, I definitely think I bring something, some good experience to the table. I also worked with the federal government at the Internal Revenue Service, so hopefully I can apply that to our city budget decisions.
Well, it's, it'll be fun, and I don't know if it's gonna be easy, but anyway, welcome to the Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations on your victory, and I know you'll have a good time.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Reporting live from the City Commission chambers, I'm Bill Young, Channel 12. Thanks for watching.